For their doggie intern for the rest of the morning.
All of these dogs are just a small sampling of what we have at our shelter. People tend to think that shelter dogs are, you know, throwaway dog.
And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
Very welcome to tonight's City Commission meeting. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Legions, followed by invocation by Commissioner Sebi Hadad.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand by your heads. We gather before you in this city council meeting in McAllen. We seek your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions that impact our community. Grant us discernment, compassion, and unity as we listen to one another and work towards solutions that benefit all. Bless the people of McAllen, especially those facing challenges. Help us extend a helping hand and foster a compassionate and inclusive community. Strengthen us to address education, healthcare, infrastructure, and the environment with care and integrity. Grant us courage to make difficult decisions, prioritizing the greater good in acting with transparency and accountability. May our actions reflect your love and justice. We are grateful for the blessings of McAllen, its culture and natural beauty. Help us preserve and enhance these gifts for future generations. Guide us in our thoughts and words and may we bring honor to your name. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. And we have a few proclamations. First we have Mental Health Awareness Month, Commissioner Quintanilla.
Anybody else coming? You can, you can, a few of you can be on this side. Yeah, just kind of separate it out.
Balance it out.
Yeah, balance it out. I'm honored to give the following proclamation. You can stand a little bit closer. Whereas citizens of McAllen who experience mental illness oftentimes exaggerate an existing tendency of loneliness, playing an important part in the McAllen community. They contribute their talents, experiences, and skills in meaningful, lasting ways. By creating awareness and with access to services and support, community members who experience mental illness can be independent, happy, and productive members of our great city. And whereas research continues to support our fundamental need for human connection, sense of belonging, and values the social, power of family, friends, and community. And whereas a dedicated group of teens from Boys and Girls Club of McAllen were selected to represent nine states in the southwest region to create awareness on the impact loneliness and isolation can have on those struggling with mental health disorders and how loneliness can impact our physical health as well. And whereas the teens from Boys and Girls Club of McAllen will present their research and community advocacy efforts in Washington DC, representing the greater McAllen area, creating a platform aimed at educating the community on the negative impact loneliness and isolation has on mental health and overcoming and overall quality of life. Whereas their research will culminate in advocating for policies aimed at valuing the importance of human connection, creating community space where everyone feels a sense of belonging and building places of social connection in McAllen so citizens of all ages can lead healthy, happy lives. Now therefore, I Omar Quintanilla, City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, Texas, by the virtue of authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Alvarez and I have been a member of the Boys and Girls Club of McAllen for over seven years now. On behalf of myself and the 15,000 kids and teens that the Boys and Girls Club of McAllen serves each year through after-school programs, summer camps, athletics, and outreach programs, thank you for always supporting the kids of McAllen.
My name is Wanang Kaptu. We also want to thank you for the proclamation acknowledging the Mental Health Awareness Month, knowing that creating awareness is the first step to de-stigmatizing an important health issue that is plaguing our citizens and this country. Our hope is that our great city will continue to create awareness and advocate for more resources and give opportunities that are intended to support and benefit the mental well-being of all citizens.
Hello, I'm Kat Moravia and will be speaking behalf of Julia. Today I stand here with my fellow teens as part of Boys and Girls Club of McAllen's Youth Voice Initiative, where we have chosen to impact our community by researching loneliness and the impact it has on our mental and physical health. We know that loneliness is an epidemic that neuroscientists and medical researchers have shown to impact our overall well-being and that social connection and a sense of belonging makes us all, regardless of age, healthier citizens.
My name is Devon Solis and right now we are in the learning and awareness phase of creating positive change in our community. We will continue to need your support so that we can make sure everyone knows how loneliness impacts everyone in a negative way and how relying on family, community, and each other impacts us in a positive way.
Hi, my name is Madeline Alcantad. So thank you. Thank you for this proclamation, for helping us spread awareness about the effects loneliness has on our mental health and physical health. We will be going to Washington DC to proudly represent our great city of McAllen and nine other states across the southwest region to advocate for positive change for our neighbors here and across the country. We'll come back and get together to see how we can create community policy that enhances the mental health of everyone and diminishes loneliness. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And next we have National Home Ownership Month, Commissioner Aguirre. Who wants to come up? Wasn't that a wonderful proclamation? 1967, when the Boys and Girls Club opened up in McAllen, Texas, I was very fortunate. I was selling papers in the downtown area and there was a family there by the Barnett family that started the Boys and Girls Club. And it was right there in front of Clark Chevrolet on 10th Street, which is our Chase Bank. And my dad worked at Clark Chevrolet. So we drove the bank, drove, so if we catch him around at 6:00, 6:30, we put the bike in the back of his trunk and get a ride home to South Texas. If not, we'd have to, we'd have to use our bike and get there. But right between that, that was, the Boys Club just had opened. So yes, I am an alumni, proud alumni. There's probably many, many of us here that are proud alumnis of the McAllen Boys and Girls Club and all Boys and Girls Club of America. Sorry, I had to say that because it means a lot. Proclamation, State of Texas County of Hidalgo, City of McAllen. Whereas each day thousands of working families across the United States achieve the American dream of owning a home of their own. And whereas the City of McAllen has always been a proud and strong supporter of homeownership, which has positive impacts on the families, neighborhoods, and the community. And whereas Affordable Homes of South Texas has created, was created through the efforts of dedicated citizens from this City of McAllen that rallied together in 1976 to improve housing conditions for families in McAllen. And whereas June always marks, or also marks the 47th anniversary of Affordable Homes of South Texas, founded, founded whose purpose is to create and support successful ownership opportunities for families. And whereas Affordable Homes of South Texas is also celebrating the 25th anniversary of the Home Buyers Fair, an annual event focused on homeownership. And whereas Affordable Homes, in conjunction with the City of McAllen, is, as proud proponents of home ownership, will join with communities across the United States to recognize the month of June as National Home Ownership Month. Now therefore, I Tony Aguirre, City Commissioner of this great City of McAllen, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, the mayor and the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of June as National Home Ownership Month.
Thank you, Commissioner Aguirre. My name is Lorena Castillo and I currently serve as the Port President for Affordable Homes of South Texas. With me I do have several of our Board of Directors, Brent Baldry, our Treasurer, Gilberto Garza on our board. And I also have Bobby Caldivio, our Executive Director. He's the man. He's behind everything and his directors here, Ray Jaquez, Gloria Escamian, Tony Fernandez. Thank you again, Commissioner Aguirre, City Commissioner for this recognition. Although this is an annual homeownership proclamation, we use it to serve as a reminder that owning a home is still the American dream, even in today's economic environment. Affordable Homes of South Texas, as a nonprofit serving our community, has had to face the reality, the world of affordability has changed. But at too fast of a pace that leaves middle and low-income households unable to keep up. We remain committed, as we've done nearly for 50 years, to finding a way to continue to help these families achieve homeownership and help build wealth across generations. June also serves as the official month of the Home Buyers Fair to be held Saturday, June the 3rd at the McAllen Convention Center from 10:00 in the morning to 4:00 PM. This is the 25th year we have held this free event and we encourage everyone considering homeownership to attend this. We also would like to thank the City of McAllen Community Development Department for their support of this event. On behalf of the Austin Board, staff, and our countless supporters, we thank the City of McAllen for continuing to be a supporter of our mission and affordable housing in McAllen. Thank you.
And finally, we have Motorcycle Awareness Month, Mayor Potem Samora.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. There you go. Just wanted to make sure you're awake. It's Les?
Yes.
Well, certainly my privilege to you to pronounce this proclamation, State of Texas County Hidalgo, City of McAllen. Whereas motorcycle riding is becoming a popular form of efficient transportation and recreation in Texas. And whereas it is important that the drivers of all vehicles be aware of each other and learn to share the road. And whereas the safety hazards created by motorists who fail to watch for motorcyclists on the streets in highways of Texas are a prime concern to motorcyclists. And whereas it is especially important that the citizens of McAllen recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the American bikers Aimed Toward Education, acronym ABEAT, of Texas is an organization that is actively promoting the operation, training, and awareness of motorcycles. And whereas it is important to recognize the need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regards to sharing the road, including me, and to honor the many contributions motorcyclists make to the communities in which they live and ride. Now therefore, I Joaquin Samora, Mayor Potem of the City of McAllen, Texas, by the virtue and authority vested in me and on behalf of the Office of the Mayor and the Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Congratulations to all. And I'm liking Mr. Cantu, would you like to say a couple of words?
My name is Les Cantu and first of all, thank you everyone here for allowing that proclamation to come through. You know, he's right, absolutely. In today's age, motorcycles are no longer just recreational. Some of us go to work with them and some of us, you know, live with it, especially for economic purposes. But I do urge everybody to look twice. You do save a life and even in our city, we have an extended police department with a big, a large, a large amount of motorcycles that run around. So please keep an eye out for us, you know, we're, we're fathers, brothers, friends, neighbors. And even when you do see us out in the road, if y'all need some help, feel free to reach out to us. We're just like you guys.
Thank you so much.
Okay, it gets to fun stuff now. Swearing in ceremony of newly elected officials. I guess we'll be swearing in Commissioner Hadad. But what do we, who else do we have? Commissioner Pepe, cabeza de vaca. Commissioner Castillo wanted his own glory, so he'll be sworn in at a later date. Commissioner.
Are you guys okay to bring this family?
Of course, definitely, absolutely. We wouldn't have it any other way. Man, he's grown. Oh, safe, safe.
All right, okay. You ready?
Yeah.
Am I gonna ask you to raise your right hand? Okay. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I state your name.
I, Sebi Hadad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of City Commissioner District 5.
Of City Commissioner District 5.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Sebi, a few words?
Few as in less than five, Sebi.
Very quick, very quick. I do want to thank everyone for their support. A lot of people in the community have supported me not only the last four years, but also as the reelection was coming up. It was a very contentious race, but luckily it came out victorious. I want to thank Judge Armando Marokin, a good friend, who took time out of his day to come swear me in. I greatly appreciate that. And my greatest supporters, my family, I see my mother here. And of course, my wife Sandy, who has had, has birthed two children in my first term. So the amount of patience that she's afforded me for the late nights, the early mornings, the constituent visits, the weekend drive-arounds and everything else, you know, making sure that she, she takes care of the children and really has, has been very patient and giving in her time as much as, probably more than me during these last four years. I couldn't be more excited to continue the work for the next four years. And a lot of that is honestly due to City McAllen staff, city management, all their support staff, Alice, everyone here. Y'all really make this a tremendous experience. And, you know, I look forward to continuing to work with everyone here. But working with the City of McAllen is really, really something truly special. And very, very excited. I know we've got big projects in mind, so thank you and God bless the City of McAllen. Thank you.
Commissioner.
I, José R. Pepe, cabeza de vaca.
I, José R. Pepe, cabeza de vaca.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Commissioner District 6.
Of Commissioner District 6.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, he's a lot heavier than two years ago when I was doing this thing. I want to thank everybody for their support. This, this journey is not being easy, but it's been very fructiferous and very nice in my life. And staff, city, you guys are amazing. You guys really, really work very hard. You really make us look good. You know, everything that you do. I want to thank my kids, they're here, Mauricio, Tania. Mario's not here, he's having finals, Pepito. For understanding then, when I cannot spend time with them because I'm doing duties that pertains to the, to the City Commission. To, to my boss, David Puentes. Brother, thank you so much for all the support, always, always. I look up to you, man. I learn from you as well. I learn from all of my colleagues right here in the City Commission. Mayor Omar, JJ, Sebi. Mr. Aguirre, thank you so much. I, Roy. Thank you, Alice. Every department head, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for, for everything. And this is a team. This is Team McAllen. We work very hard together to make this place the best place in all of Texas. So thank you so much. God bless you all. God bless you.
And gentlemen, congratulations, Commissioner cabeza de vaca, Sebi. Congratulations, and you know what? We have excellent administration staff and we have a hell of a team up here. It makes me proud to work with all of you. Thank you, guys. Let's see, public hearings.
Mayor, Commissioners, tonight we have four items listed under routine, two rezonings and two conditional use permits. As always, they come in the favorable recommendation for planning zoning and had no opposition. They can be approved in one motion or discussed separately as desired. They are a rezone from R4 to C4 at 901 East Fir, a rezone from C3 to R1 at 905 B.C. Avenue, a conditional use permit for one year for a food truck park at 421 South 17th, and a conditional use permit amendment for a plan unit development at 8300 North Ware Road, that is for Campolosueño subdivision.
Anybody here to speak against any of the issues? I need to abstain from the last one, the Campolosueño's. Anybody against any of the issues? Oh, if not, do I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
This is a conditional use permit for one year for an institutional use, a maternity home at 801 Kennedy Avenue. This property is located on the southwest corner of Kennedy and 8th. It is zoned R1 with R1 to the west and east and C1 to the north and south. Surrounding uses include single-family homes, retail, as well as office uses. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to run a maternity home for up to six single pregnant women at a time. Casa Lidia will provide pregnancy care, Christian counseling, and help with doctor's visits. Staff did receive one phone call and one email in opposition, or letter rather, in opposition citing concerns with the type of women to be housed. The item was presented at the May 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There was no opposition at that meeting and it was unanimously recommended for approval.
Okay, anybody speak against the item? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
It is for life of the youth, correct, correct. And that's the way it was advertised, it was my mistake.
And I still look forward to going. I just haven't been able to yet. Okay, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of McAllen?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We have item D.
Yes, sir, so this is for the comprehensive plan that was presented during workshop. The executive summary and the whole plan was attached to the agenda. I will add that the plan was posted at McAllen2040.com for 30 days, which, and received positive comments. The item was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of May the 2nd, where unanimously was recommended for approval. This is a public hearing item, so we do, but we are recommending approval.
Do you have anybody regarding the item? Yes, ma'am.
Nedra Caner, 4121 Camalia Court, McAllen. I would like to speak on Envision McAllen. I think it sets a bold vision for McAllen, aimed at keeping McAllen as the leading city of the region. The Envision McAllen Comprehensive Plan, McAllen 2040, sets a vision for growth for the next 20 to 30 years. The overall plan is a positive step forward for McAllen. Mixed-use neighborhoods was promoted in the 2007 Comprehensive Plan on which I was a member. And it needs to be jump-started. Development should be complementary to existing single-family neighborhoods to avoid devaluation of those homes and resentment and fear by those homeowners. The emphasis on preservation and rehabilitation of downtown is overdue. It speaks to that. Transportation is very important. And mobility, transportation and mobility on complete streets and a better balance ratio of ride-away situations is addressed in this plan. It is absolutely incredibly important to have a vision for the next 20 years, which this plan does. The 2007 Comprehensive Planning Document stressed the need for more green spaces and this has not kept up with McAllen's growth in many new neighborhoods, which are still built on the Shotgun Street and Cookie Cutter House model. This Envision McAllen Plan does address this problem. And if this problem is adopted and implemented, I think this will be improved. Now, what I forgot to include in my remarks to you, but I'm including now, this does not address the need of all citizens to have access to broadband. Broadband is a very important utility comparable to electricity and maybe water, although we do need water to survive. I guess we can survive without broadband. But in this day and age, broadband needs to be addressed and I don't see this addressed in this plan. I would hope it would be. So please add that to my remarks. It's very important to note that adopting Envision McAllen is only the first step in bringing the plan and its policies to fruition. A comprehensive plan is a bringing the plan and its policies to fruition. A comprehensive plan is a guide and a policy document for the city. It is not law or ordinance. So McAllen is currently working on updating our zoning, our subdivision and landscaping ordinances to ensure that regulations are in place to allow Envision McAllen outlook to come to fruition. So a revision of the ordinances is the missing piece from the Comprehensive Plan update adopted in 2007. Adopt this 2023 Envision McAllen Plan and then adopt the revised ordinances in the coming months that are necessary to implement Envision McAllen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Questions, comments regarding the plan?
It's a good plan. I've been revising it. That was part of the first one back in the days. It was pretty good. So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. We have items eight through M. Do we need to pull anything out?
Mayor, if I could just comment on item G. Friday afternoon, and unfortunately, we couldn't get the agenda packet updated before it went out, we got clarification from MISD on three items in the contract, proposed contract, that clarify that the city will provide equipment and materials required for program participants, that the school district will provide breakfast and lunch in accordance with MISD's summer feeding program, and that the school district will be responsible for opening the facilities in the morning and closing them after all children have been picked up.
Okay, excellent. Do we need to pull anything out? If not, do I have a motion to approve items eight through M?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Bits and contracts, item three.
B is a word of contract for temporary employment services.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Christina Flos, HR Director, requesting your consideration and approval on a contract for temporary employment services. The city does use temporary staff for city events and other needs. We did go out for RFPs. We received 16 submittals. A committee scored those submittals and subsequently interviewed the top four ranking.
This is a yearly thing we do.
Yes, so it's actually three years. So we're asking to do the same thing. We're asking to award three vendors, LHM, Abacus, and Trifacta. It would be for one year with the option to extend for three additional one-year terms.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
B is a word of contract for the development of Morris Park.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. This is to consider and approve a word of contract to RG Enterprises for the development of Morris Park. We did go out for four bids. RG Enterprises came in at 1.3, 1,348,935. The Park and Recreation Department recommends the award of contract to RG Enterprises in, for that amount. Any questions?
Questions?
I have any questions, but I know we are a little bit over budget, right, on this one?
Correct.
In the future, is it possible that we, that they send breakdowns of the total bid? Because we don't get breakdowns, right?
No, sir. When that bid went out, it was just a overall bid that came back. It wasn't
With breakdowns that would help us maybe determine what might be done in-house, or could it be done any different?
What I've, what I've seen in the past and how we do it at Parks and Rec, we do itemize. So if we have to go back, value engineer, we could take a look at those items and then reduce from there. However, this was just one base bid package, so we had no idea of where they came in or where they stood from.
Most of it seems to be construction, we assume.
Construction, yes, sir.
Or we can always look at what we can do in-house and let out the rest.
Correct. So we were gonna do owner furnished in-house for some of the amenities, the musco lighting, the bike racks, things that we could do in-house. But like Commissioner Hadad said, this was more of the construction material cost utilities.
Okay, more questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C.
C is a word of contract for the purchase of two current model combinations sewer and catch basin.
Mayor, Commissioners?
Lose bit?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C.
Thank you.
D is consideration and approval of an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for an artist stipend for a public mural in coordination with Keep McAllen Beautiful.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Commission, Tech Dot reached out to the city via Keep McAllen Beautiful to propose a partnership to create a mural within the city of McAllen to promote the State's Don't Mess With Texas campaign. Tech Dot has been partnering throughout the state with other cities. They are proposing to pay the artist $1,000 and $2,000 for paint and supplies. The proposed location is the concrete rip raft on Pecan and Second Street along Yidalo Carzir irrigation District Number Two, which we have already acquired permission for. The Keep McAllen Beautiful Public Art Committee met and identified several locations and proposed this site because it's one of the highest visible areas with lots of traffic. Keep McAllen Beautiful is pending the call for artists until the agreement is, is signed by both parties. The timeline includes unveiling this project on the week of August 28th. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item E.
Thank you.
E is a word of contract for the McAllen Fire Station Number Eight.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. We received five responsive proposals for Fire Station Eight located at tres lagos. Fire Station Eight is approximately 10,600 square feet with two engine bays, men and women's dormitories, turnout, turnout gear room, captain's quarters, dispatch room, and a full kitchen with dining. Included for your review in this bid is the bid tab along with the evaluation matrix for your review. Staff recommends award of the base bid to the top-ranked bidder, NM Contracting LLC of McAllen, Texas, for the base bid amount of $4,622,500, not to exceed 480 calendar days, and we open it up for any questions.
And Commissioner Quintanilla will be abstaining. Questions, comments?
Did anybody provide, or did we look at how? We, there's an over budget of the 1.4?
We looked at the, at the highest bidder or the lowest bidder, the lowest responsive bidders breakdown in big divisions. One of the things about this that is a unique dormitory is we do have a men and women's facility, so that added some cost. We had to separate rooms out a little more than usual. We do have the turnout bays that is not typical to other fire stations to meet the new fire codes. So there are a couple of extra things in this. We could value certain items, but we currently provide those at the other fire stations. So in our review of that, we felt we should keep the items that other fire stations have, such as the concrete cement that's already for fire trucks. We have heavy trucks. We don't want to compromise there. All our fire stations are steel-framed. The newer construction, we felt we should keep that. And so we did look at that with the contractor. We did take out the allowance to lower that some, but we feel that, you know, we got a fair and comparable bid as to the other bidders.
In comparison to the other existing fire stations, is the building footprint larger than the?
Um, this is similar to the newest construction that we have. I think we added a little extra square footage for that turnout gear, about 500 to 600 additional square feet, but this would be similar to the fire station on Benson and Five Mile or Six Mile line.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item M.
F is a word of contract for the purchase of furniture to gateway for the new Parks and Rec facility.
Mayor and Commissioner, this item is for the purchase and installation of furniture for the new McAllen Parks and Rec Administration Facility. Furniture will be purchased through a buyboard cooperative contract. Staff recommends award of the contract to gateway in the total amount not to exceed $160,276.57. We've included the proposal in the back with the layout of furniture for your review.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item J.
G is a word of contract for 2023 single machine repaving at La Paloma.
The scope of work includes recycling repaving of 16,900 square yards of existing pavement or over 1.8 center miles and any necessary base repair. The project is funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Staff recommends award of the sole response, of the contract to the sole responsive bidder, Cutler Repaving, Inc. of Lawrence, Kansas, in the amount of $115,953.20, with a contract time not to exceed 20 calendar days, and we open it up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
And H is a word of contract for the hot mix related to item G.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item I.
I is a word of contract to Marcia Apia Civil Infrastructure Consultants for professional engineering of various drainage projects.
Mayor and Commissioner, we have three projects that we solicited, a proposal from the engineer. The proposed scope includes the analysis, design, and preparation of construction documents for three drainage projects identified by our existing master plan, the Country Club Terrace, North 41st, Andaffido, and Gray subdivision. Staff recommends award of professional engineering services contract to Marcia Apia Civil Infrastructure Consultant Group of McAllen, Texas, in the total amount of $35,250, and we open it up for any questions.
Is this one of the ones in the revolving?
Yeah, we have a rotation list, and so we solicited them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item J.
J is a word of contract to Rio Delta Engineering for professional engineering services.
Same thing?
This is the same contract, four different subdivisions.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item K.
K is consideration and approval license agreement allowing private landscape features and fire department connection to remain on city right-of-way.
Mayor and Commissioner, this license agreement was brought forth by Engineer Kelly Heller Vella P. On behalf of the developer-owner, Tenback LLC and the Premier Storage Subdivision requests approval to leave the now-existing landscape features, including trees and other vegetation and an FDC connection. The property owner is in concurrence with the terms outlined in the license agreement, including the removal and relocation of the landscape features and/or the FDC at the owner's expense if the city requires use of the right-of-way. Staff is in concurrence. Staff recommends approval of the license agreement as requested.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
L is consideration and authorization to execute payment to Rio Valley Switching for the pedestrian rail at Jackson and Bike Railroad.
On this item, the City McAllen is the lead agency in coordinating, designing, and the project elements for the future Jackson Hiking Bike Trail. The scope includes the construction of a concrete panels and railroad crossing signal with Rio Valley Switching Company, in which Union Pacific Railroad will oversee the construction within their right-of-way. The rail, the railroad crossing payments are needed to initiate permanent clearance from the railroad companies in order to submit to Tech Dot and remain project, and keep the project on its letting schedule. The engineer and staff recommend approval to execute the payment to Rio Valley Switching Company and Union Pacific Railroad in the amount of $192,124.94, and we open it up for any questions.
Questions?
Where is this located again?
Uh, just west, if you go on Wisconsin and you cross Jackson, there's a railroad there that, that would be crossed.
Why is it called Jackson Hiking Bike?
Uh, because we're connecting to Edinburgh, Jackson Hiking Bike.
The Edinburgh, Jackson Road.
We had two separate applications. It's just.
Okay. I keep thinking South McAllen, Jackson.
No.
Motion to approve. So good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item M.
M is consider and approval of an interlocal MISD for environmental and aquatic science at Quinta Mazatlan.
Mayor, City Commission, requesting for your consideration and possible approval of an interlocal agreement with McAllen ISD for environmental and aquatic science education at Quinta Mazatlan for over 4,000 students during the school year. Staff recommends award of agreement.
Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item Four.
Four is consideration and approval of longevity pay for full-time and non-civil service employees.
So what do we add in the workshop?
Workshop.
We have questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item D.
B is ordinance provided for a budget amendment for Morris Park. You took action earlier.
We just approved. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item Five A.
Five A is a variance consideration request to the right-of-way dedication requirements for Hobbs Drive and North Bicentennial Boulevard, address 9229 North Bicentennial.
Yes, sir. Silver Oak is a five-lot subdivision consisting of 2.92 acres. It is zoned R1. It's on the southwest corner of Bicentennial and future Hobbs Drive. Engineer on behalf of the owner is requesting a variance to the right-of-way requirements for both Bicentennial and Hobbs. Bicentennial requires 75 feet dedication of center line for a total of 150, while Hobbs requires 40 feet for a total of 80 feet. They are proposing zero for Bicentennial, dedicating zero for Bicentennial, and dedicating only 20 for Hobbs. The request was presented at the May 2 Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, where the board recommended approval of the Hobbs Drive variance as requested, but a dedication for a total of 60 feet from center line for Bicentennial in lieu of the 75. The project engineer stated that the owner was agreeable to this middle ground. There are four options before you. Staff is recommending option one, which is approval as recommended by P&amp;Z and agreed upon by the owner.
How much would it affect? I mean, it's Bicentennial. No matter what it's, people just, they travel faster. Will this affect anything?
It, it won't affect anything like that. What we're requesting is more for, to be able to put utilities and, and issues like that.
What about the other one on, what is it, Hobs?
On Hobbs, we're actually removed, well, we just approved the new comp plan. That one has been, has been downgraded. Used to be a collector. Now it's just a minor collector. So all we need is 60 feet of right-of-way instead of 80.
But we're good.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and the thing is that also that needs to be noted is that the subdivision to the north now will have.
An exit.
An, an out. In other words, it'll be much safer for, for that subdivision, Floresta.
Floresta.
Something like that.
So they'll be able to, to come out to there. That's for public safety. You can get our, our fire engines and everything and our police to go in through there also.
Any other comments, questions?
Do we have to approve a staff recommendation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item C, advisory board appointments. Six, A. Oh, did I miss it?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. This item is for advisory board appointments. I have given you the spreadsheets. Mayor Avialobos and Commissioner Quintanilla have made appointments. The mayor has made appointments to CDBG, Parks and Rec, Traffic Commission, and CBOA, and Commissioner Quintanilla has also made an appointment to the Parks Board. I've also wanted to advise you that the library is needing a replacement for the alternate position to the board. Doctor Ash has resigned, so we're needing to fill that one, and that one requires a at-large nomination, just to make you aware of that. And at this time, I will entertain any other nominations you wish to make.
But did you, was the two that I gave you two weeks ago, was it approved last meeting?
Yes, sir. They were approved at the last meeting, and we've sent out letters of appointment.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other nominations? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Immigration, Respete. Good news, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, the drop-off numbers from CBP and immigration have spiked following the, the change here that we had with Title 42 back on May the 11th. Those numbers have come down quite a bit since then, which is the good news. We did reopen Ansel Duus Park at the request of Catholic Charities back on May the 9th. At one point, we had about 1,100 that were out there at Ansel Duus Park. That number is now down to less than 100 that are at the park today. We do still have a capacity for 3,400 out there if needed. We are keeping a very close eye on what happens in relation to Border Patrol and CBP, as we've been told that those numbers may increase within the next two to three days. So we remain very careful to, to keep an eye on what's happening. To give you some specific numbers, two weeks ago, 2,067, that went through our process, 1.8% COVID positivity rate. And then this last week, we had 2,515 with a 2.5% COVID positivity rate. I will mention that at the request of Catholic Charities, we do continue COVID testing at the site there at Ansel Duus. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have item C. Do we need to go into executive before, or?
Mayor, it is a personnel item, and in case there's additional discussion that's needed for that item, I recommend that we table it and discuss in executive session. Or you choose to do.
Does anybody need a, need an executive session? Does anybody need a, need an executive session regarding the item?
No.
I know.
What are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Gloria.
Juan Gloria.
That Juan Gloria is our first chief.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Gloria.
Congratulations, Mr. Gloria. And you might want to say a few words. Why not? You're already here.
Do it at your own peril.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Roy, Mr. State Attorney, thank you very much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. I love the McAllen Fire Department. I love our city, and like I mentioned before, I'm looking to continue doing my job to the best of my ability. I really appreciate it for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you for your services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Future agenda items.
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we consider eliminating Zoom. As you know, we've got fewer and fewer folks using Zoom, and we're not required to have Zoom.
I mean, televised through Zoom.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
And so if we, I'm gonna, I'll consult with the state attorney and see if we need to bring an item for action, but if not, I'd like to recommend we do that.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like for the, for you and for the board to consider at the next meeting, which would be in June for the election of Mayor Protown.
Okay. Anything else? And actually, what I'd like to take a look at, and look at our policies regarding CBD and THC. Anything else? If not, we have a table item. Are we taking that up or?
Yes, sir. Consideration.
I have a motion to remove from the table.
Motion to remove from table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, off the table.
Chief?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, the item that we have here today is in regards to the fireworks extension request. So we received a request to allow the fireworks stand in South McAllen and the fireworks warehouse located on South Ten Street and Dicker Road. The actual address is eighty-five oh-nine South Ten Street, owned by Mr. Ramiro Gonzalez, Jr., and represented by Mr. Lucio III Group, PLLC, to continue selling fireworks in their location now inside city limits. The fireworks warehouse was annexed into the city limits in November twenty-three, twenty-fifteen, and was given a nuisance abatement agreement to allow them time to amortize or amortize out the use of the investment. The agreement expired last year. With that in mind, it is staff's position that the wooden stands are a minimal investment and should be relocated outside city limits at this time. In August of last year, a two-year extension was granted to another fireworks warehouse owned by another owner and located at FM one-oh-seven to allow sales until August fourteenth of twenty-twenty-four.
That's the one-on-one-oh-seven.
That is the one-on-one-oh-seven. It's owned completely by somebody else, so they have an extension until August fourteenth of twenty-twenty-four.
And as far as development and all that type of stuff, it really has been pretty much the same in the area.
Yes, that is correct. That has been the same.
Similar to the one-on-one-oh-seven.
That is correct.
And then they sell fireworks, but in our city, we still disallow the use or the final fireworks.
That is correct. Yeah, and so with that in mind, we have two options before you. Option one is staff recommends denial of the request for an extension of the nuisance abatement agreement for all stands and warehouses. Option two, which is actually what we staff are bringing before you for consideration and approval, option two is allow a two-year extension of the nuisance abatement agreement only for the warehouse to allow all agreements to expire on a uniform date on August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. So basically, we're still asking that the small stands, those need to be removed. However, the warehouses, you know, we're recommending allow them to continue at the same timeline as the existing extension for the different business owner. That's what we're presenting to you for consideration, option two.
And generally, I don't recommend or anything, but I just, this is one of those that I don't feel comfortable with, you know, annexing, taking, and then, okay, by a certain point in time, you need to do something different, even though it's not affecting anybody other than our ordinance. So I would, I would like to extend without any, for a couple of years and then revisit it again. Should there be more development, should there be something different, then take a look at it, but otherwise, we're just affecting entrepreneurs in reality.
So the one thing to consider on the warehouses is that being inside city limits, that we need to fall completely on the older requirements of the fire code, which for those type of facilities, storage, their capacity and all that, they would require fire suppression systems, which they don't have and so on, and so that is, that is something critical to take into account, you know, that we're talking about warehouses, fireworks within our city limits, you know, with, you know, not up to, not up to that.
And I guess that's something we can visit. Maybe if we want to keep on extending, they may have to put something like that.
Yeah.
But in the interim, I think, I find it difficult to kind of impose my conditions on something where they existed before. Can't say grandfather, if there was an agreement, but I just don't see the purpose in shutting somebody down when you don't have to.
So.
Look, it's for the sale and not for the use of the fireworks inside city limits, so.
Of course.
The property is the warehouse that's there on Dicker Road. I went to go see it to make sure that I remembered it well. It's been there for a long time, and Dicker Road was expanded, so now it's, but it's a, it's a well-built warehouse.
Correct.
And, you know, not infringing on anything, and, you know, we annexed all that area, and that came with it. So I have a difficult time also saying no to somebody that's been there for a while and invested in a very well-looked, very well-lit also warehouse.
And, Mr. Mayor, I know that we had the similar discussion with regards to the other fireworks operation warehouse stand on one-oh-seven, and, you know, I still feel that, you know, we should have followed the nuisance agreement. Obviously, the board at that time felt and approved it. I think it's, even though that one of the options is to only allow the warehouse, I think I'd as well keep it the same, just keep the stands operating along with the warehouse to be in even parity with the other operation, because it also serves as a warehouse, and I believe at some point in time was selling fireworks. So I make a motion to allow a two-year extension to make a uniform date expiration of August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and specifically with this applicant, it'd be allowed to keep the fireworks stand and the warehouse until such date.
Until revisited in two years.
And then we can revisit in two years.
Revisit in two years?
I think the applicant wants to maybe approach, I don't know.
So nobody signed up for agenda item, public comment?
Oh.
Just note to the commission that this is not a public hearing item.
But you know what? Well, it's regarding the item on the agenda quickly. But we need to make sure we sign up.
Yes, sir, Mayor, and I apologize, I didn't realize I was here, I just didn't realize there was a paperwork requirement. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your service. I can relate, long, tough hours, sitting behind the dais. I want to thank you. I have with me today Mr. Gonzalez from Big G's Fireworks, formerly with Mr. G's Fireworks, been in this community a long time. Just like you said, Mayor, these are locations that existed prior to annexation, whether they be stands, whether they be warehouses, they were there. They sought out these locations, they negotiated leases with the owners of the property, they marketed and established them as locations to sell their fireworks to the public. It's very hard to relocate, whether it be a stand, whether it be a warehouse. We thank you for the two-year extension blanket, whether it be warehouses or stands, but, you know, I think that the public policy decision here is if you annex a location into the city, and there is, there should be a dialogue of whether or not they were operating legally in the county, whether they would continue to operate. And let me just say this, Commissioners and Mayor, the stands or warehouses, they only sell for twenty days a year. That's it. Twenty days a year, ten days leading up to Fourth of July, ten days leading up to New Year's, and if there's any issues with the discharge of fireworks, the county can shut them down if we're in a severe drought. But at none, no locations, whether they be here in McAllen or anywhere else, has there been incident regarding the stands or warehouses. And in addition, you know, they do pay taxes, they fall under state fire marshal code, they fall under city fire marshal code, and I think they're well-regulated and protect the public, and fireworks are fun. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but thank you for your considerations.
We're good.
Twenty days?
Twenty days a year, total. Yes, sir.
Is there was a motion in the second?
User?
All in favor?
Aye.
All against, motion carries.
Thank you.
What else do we have?
We have an item or two on executive session.
Okay, I guess we'll recess into executive session. Okay, I guess we'll recess into executive session.